A call to order to a public work session for the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard. Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. We have on the agenda an item for discussion of the city attorney process. But before we get into the discussion of that process, I need to bring something to my colleagues' attention, and we will need a consensus before we can move forward. I know that there was an email that was sent out, and the email indicated if there was no objection from council, could we start with the hiring process for the city attorney? But in order to be in order, we will still need a consensus to do that. And I'd like to read something to my colleagues just to make everybody aware of what we need to do going forward as it relates to consensus. The definition of a consensus based on Roberts' Rules of Order that governs parliamentary procedure, question of the interpretation of consensus is the decision of a majority vote. Thus, if there is no objection from council is not a consensus unless the majority replies in the affirmative. Simply put, if there is a desire to get a consensus and it is presented to the council, then in order for us to move forward with that consensus, it has to be an affirmative yes of the majority of council. Everybody okay with that?
Is that council rules?
That is under section of the code, "Council Rules", and we follow Roberts' Rules under council rules. Mr. Parliamentarian, can you address that?
Yes, sir. Consensus, first of all, is a majority of those present if we're in a public setting. And it's an affirmative consensus. So I think what the mayor says is correct. I sent a memo out to everybody just a few minutes ago in our research. Mr. Challenger and I did some research because there was some confusion over the definition of consensus. And we believe it's, well, the research showed it's an affirmative yes.
Okay.
And, which shouldn't be much harder to do. I mean, if you read the email.
There hasn't been any confusion over consensus. The question I was just asking was to make sure that when the language is used, if there is no objection. If there has been no objection, then are you saying that's not a consensus?
No, because it hasn't been an affirmative vote yes. That's certainly the safer way of doing it. And so, and our research indicates that. So I would ask you all just to do that.
Just to make sure you vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So with that in mind, I just call for a consensus and a show of hands so that we can proceed with the hiring process. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we came to do this. And this is an emergency meeting. And I think that we shouldn't do anything but tackle this. I mean, had we discussed the hiring process when I spoke with the clerk, then I would've told her I wasn't available because that's something we can do at a regular meeting. But this is kind of important. That's why we called the meeting. And I think we need to stay within that parameter.
Thank you, sir. The question before us again is there was a colleague on council who indicated that they wanted to discuss the hiring process before we got into the ARPA discussion. That was the request. All I'm asking this body to do is if we choose not to discuss the hiring process, then you will have the consensus that you do not want to do that. If we do, then you will have the consensus that you do. So what I've put before us as a group, is there a consensus to move forward with the hiring process by a show of hands? If you would show your hand, then we will determine. So there's only one, so that does not constitute a consensus of moving forward with the hiring process. Therefore, we will move forward with the agenda that is set by the city manager. Ma'am, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. We are here tonight to continue the discussion regarding the American Rescue Protection Act funds. We are close, but we have several items that we need additional direction from council. This does not negate the fact that we're still working on creating a prioritization for how the funds are dispersed. We will present that as soon as staff has been able to get information regarding all of that information. But tonight is specifically to discuss the infrastructure projects as well as the additional funding that's available for those projects and the timing of those projects. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Mimi Terry to walk us through the slides.
Sure. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure. I thought we were going to discuss the whole thing, but, so we're just limiting this to the items you mentioned?
Yes, we can talk about the whole things because we're prepared, but I thought we wanted to focus on those things that we knew that there was not consensus on. Because all the others, we, in regards to the other categories and line items, based on all the meetings that we had, there was consensus on all of those.
Right. Well, I think there's some consensus about funding them, but we still don't have the specifics as far as what each of the, okay.
Correct. But these are the ones that could potentially provide additional funding. And that's why we wanted to make sure we were clear on what these are going to do.
Okay.
And then, once we get these, then we would come back with all of that incorporated into another package for you to review in totality.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
So I just want to get a understanding for me. So we're not discussing the, like the instance, the recreation that was added to this?
Yes, that's one of the items that was put on here that's not currently addressed. And so, we would have to find funds to cover those programs. That's one of the, that's one of the slides in here is to have that discussion.
But we're not discuss, because originally, though, when we did have the meeting, I originally thought that it was about this in general. It's kind of what Mr. Battle was coming about as far as discussing it. I guess this was his substitute for the workshop that he was talking about.
And that's what we're doing. Once we get the consensus from council that we want to include those recreation programs, that we're not going to fund certain projects, then we would come back with those included and present the entire package.
But we are going to be able to bring out and discuss other things as well, correct?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, but we just focus on the ones where there was not consensus.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Madam City Manager, council members, and Portsmouth City family. We are having a discussion about the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And what we're looking for is a city council decision. Again, I would just like to identify the categories for ARPA. We have definitely identified those and come across and have several meetings to address those. But what we are here to address today are the categories that council would, we would like council to make a decision on so that we would know where to allocate these funds. So the current CIP project seems to be where we were as it relates to the seawall replacement. The appropriation, so what I wanted to do, because council asked this in the past, is that a current CIP project, yes, it is. Have we spent dollars on that CIP project? Yes, we have. The funding that is left for completion for that particular CIP project is about $6.8 million. And so, what we were requesting was that ARPA funding cover that of the $4.5 million that we had allocated. At this point, we were just providing this information so that council can determine if they want to continue with this process by using ARPA dollars to fund this or to leave it in the CIP. And the CIP at that point would have to cover it, which are your general fund dollars, which we would have to go after funding to cover this debt. Would mostly be the way we would go after bonds. And I'll come back to this because I'm sure you're going to have questions. So this is to determine if we're going to move the $4.5 million that we had projected for the ARPA funding to cover this cost. Are we going to continue with it and leave it in this category for infrastructure? Or are we going to move it to another category that you see fit or whichever council decides? The water tank rehab? The water tank rehab is a current CIP project. The original appropriation was at $5.5 million. We've expended $1.4. We were looking to cover the balance of that project at $4 million. So we allocated the ARPA funding to cover this cost. Again, if the city council makes a decision or determination that they want those funds allocated elsewhere, we would move those into a different category to fund whatever city council agrees that they would like or decide on tonight. Recreation programs. These were non-current CIP projects. We received this list. Currently, we already had allocated 5.3 out of ARPA funds to cover this, 5.3 or 5.2. So these were additional programs that the city council members provided when there was a 101 and asked us to come back and provide those dollars of what it would cost to get these rec facilities complete. You have the neighborhood facility of 1.7 or 1.8, the Cavalier Manor Rec Complex, the Port Norfolk Rec Center, Senior Station, and the Churchland Senior Soccer Field. So those programs or projects would cover 5.425. And so, that means those ARPA dollars, right now, we had nothing allocated to those programs. So if council decides, or if it's the pleasure of council to move any of the other dollars, we would have to allocate it to this category to cover these program costs. So where we are now is we're just requesting council direction. I'm sure council will have some questions as to anything you would like to ask. But I just wanted to ensure that we understood for the purpose of this meeting, if we could get direction on how you would like to either continue with the categories that we have for the projects or move those dollars elsewhere to fund any additional projects that were added or that council requested that we look at.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. ...
I can't hear you.
Excuse me.
No problem.
If we're saying that you have CIP funding, and then you're going to transfer some of the awkward funding to get the job completed, then you said that you were going to transfer $4 million for infrastructure. But here you have $10 million for infrastructure.
Those were only the two projects that were in question. There were several projects from the beginning that we had under infrastructure. So we had the seawall, we had Prentice Park, we had several. So the ones, the actual seawall was the project that there was a bigger concern when it came to council, that council had the questions on. So I, based on just what council relayed back, the question was with the seawall. Do we need to continue? Do we take it off the books? Do, was, nobody mentioned that the other infrastructure projects were up for concern.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if we're going to move $4 million of awkward funding to infrastructure, why wouldn't we just have $4 million? You see what I'm saying?
No, sir. I don't understand what you're saying because we had...
Well, we're going to move $4 million of awkward funding is what was said. So if we're going to move $4 million of awkward funding to infrastructure, why would we have $10 million?
The, okay, go ahead.
Can I, can I respond? The $4 million is, we're taking it away from infrastructure.
Right.
We're reducing infrastructure by $4 million to $6 million. And we're looking to program that to direct payments or something else that the council directs us to do.
So we have $10,938,000.
Right. And under that $10,938,000 is operations building for $2.8 million, security fencing for $500,000, and then Ebony Heights, which is addressing the western portion of Ebony Heights to reduce flooding, and then sidewalk replacement associated with that. That's the remaining that will be, those projects, there was no concerns that were expressed to us. So we did not focus on those. We said the seawall replacement was one that was of concern, so we wanted to get additional direction.
So you have a variety of infrastructure and water sewer projects.
Correct.
That we're doing.
Okay. Correct. Yes, sir.
And one of the things that I wanted to make clear, there may have been some confusion in. Mr. Wright, you may, if you would step forward to help us understand this. Back in, one of the capital projects that we were talking about at our last meeting was the elevated tanks, the two elevated tanks that need rehabilitation. And I know that some of my colleagues talked about this perhaps could be a cosmetic fix. But I wanted to remind my colleagues that back in January, the January 26, 2021 report back, we talked about the elevated tanks. And we talked about how they needed to be rehabbed, the piping and all that needed to be reworked. And that was a program that had been on the books since 2017. Is that correct?
Good evening.
Somewhere around there.
Good evening.
2017. But the point that I wanted to make was, is that when we were briefed back in January on the elevated tanks, the cost to repair those two tanks was $1.5 million per tank. And here we are in September, October. As we all know, that the cost of waiting goes up. Those tanks need to be rehabilitated. It's not necessarily a cosmetic fix. So I just wanted to be clear and make sure we all understood that if we forego the improvement to those two tanks, that money will still have to be, that job will still have to be completed. But instead of using the money we have in the ARPA funds today to complete that job, we would have to go out and issue bonds to complete it in the future. Is that correct?
Or use general fund dollars.
Or use general fund dollars. And my question was, my question to you was, is getting those two tanks repaired necessary to do today? Or what happens if we continue to put it off for a later date?
Well, the longer you delay the repairs, it's likely that additional work will need to be done, whether it's to the piping, to the valves, whatever the, whatever you do when you do the assessment. I'm not the utility guy, so I speak better in things that I'm used with. So take a parking garage or a bridge or something like that. So if I do an assessment this year, I'm going to find X number of things that are wrong with it. If I wait a few years and come back and do another assessment, I'm going to find X plus whatever I find then. And so, those repairs would be, would be more. And likely, the way today's, today's economy is going, supply chain of materials, those costs will likely be greater.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, then. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you're here. Sir, you have the floor.
Right. Once again, I think for council, it's a philosophical issue as far as our thoughts. Are we going to use funds to assist our residents who are in need? Or are we going to go out on the market and get bonds to take care of infrastructure work? I'm still of the philosophy that the American Rescue Plan funds should be used to help our citizens as much as possible. The discussion about the water tanks, that came up. As far as ARPA funding now, the January discussion you're talking about, those are two different discussions. That came up within the context of ARPA. And we were talking about the outward appearance of the water tanks. There was no mention at that time about any internal structures, not at, not when we were discussing ARPA. And so, it's sort of difficult to really make an assessment in isolation from how the citizens will be impacted because all we see here are funds that would go to infrastructure if we want, or either they would go to assist the citizens. But we don't, we still don't know, based on what you have already allocated, how many families that will impact, how much per family. So we're looking at it really in isolation without really knowing how these dollars will end up impacting. But I'm still of the opinion that we should direct these funds as much as possible to assist in our citizens. And we can use, like we had discussed before, had there been no ARPA funds, what would we have done? And I think you presented, we would have gone out on the bond market. And that's where, that's where I am. And then the other issue, too, I'm still not clear, about using our public utilities fund to assist. Where are we as far as using the public utility funds to do any of these projects?
So it's a, it's a combination. So the utility funds are, utility projects are funded in combination by the rates that the citizens pay in addition to, in addition to bonds. Larger projects like the water treatment plant and some of those for, so to speak, mega million dollar projects, those are bond funded. Some of the projects that aren't so large are funded strictly through the utility and those rates are the ones that the citizens pay.
So would the water tank rehab be eligible for public, the public utility funds?
It would be probably a combination of both. It depends on the conversations that the utility department has when they're doing their budget along with the finance department, how they would fund that project in totality.
Have we explored that?
I can't speak for that, that part of it.
Who can?
So all of the utilities, again, for this water tank rehab is already on the books. So again, I was coming after council to ask at some point for additional, to be able to go out the utility bonds to be able to do these projects. We kind of discussed that when we had our 101s.
So let me make sure, let me make sure I'm understanding. So for the public utilities, you were going to pursue bonds through the public utility?
I was going to come to council and ask, however, because we had these ARPA dollars. I'm looking at our credit rating, I'm looking at our bond rating, I'm looking at what dollars we can free up to be, to do other projects. Again, this is one of many projects. So just in trying to ensure that I use the resources, that the best resources to our ability. Because if something bigger comes up or if, as we continue to have to deal with more infrastructure for utilities, they, I would rather save that for something bigger than to have to go out the utilities for some dollars that we may already have available.
And we still don't have the breakdown of what's cosmetic and what is the internal work?
No, I mean, the only, the best I could give you is the analogy that I gave you at the last time, based on mobilization. If you defer the exterior, which I assume is what you would consider cosmetic, if you delay that, it's about 20% mobilization if you don't do it at that time. So if you're looking at a $4 million project, 20% is about $800,000.
Well, see, I don't, I'm still not clear whether it's a delay because we haven't assessed whether you can use the public utility funds or go out on the bonds through public utilities.
It would be a delay in that it would take me to have to go after bond money to finish the project. Is that what you mean?
I thought you were saying, too, that there were some funds within public utilities that could be used as well.
I'm sorry.
That there were funds within public utilities. You had, you said there were two options within public utilities, the funds that are generated through the water, water rate, as well as bonds.
Right, but you... Just for clarification, when I, when I say delay, if you don't do the exterior, if you, if you choose to just fund those other components when you do the rehabilitation, that's the delay I'm talking about. So if you, so you have the rehabilitation project, the total, in totality, you remove the exterior, which I assume is what you're talking about, it's being cosmetic, that remobilization come back to do just that costs you about 20% of the entire project cost. That's what I mean by delay. If that, if that helps.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. My question, I suppose, okay, so we have current CIP projects that we are proposing to use ARPA funds for. And these projects were identified years ago, two years ago, 2017, 2018, 2019. And we had to go to the bond market at that time to secure the funding for that. So is the funding already in place somewhere? Or did we use that up? I mean, it's gone. So we got it to do for this project, but we use it for something else?
Don't forget, you have many projects.
Right.
So what we do is when we have to go for utility bond funding, we identify the projects that we're using. So when they're all, every single project may not be just out of bond. We have projects that are there for years. At that point, it was, it should have been coming out of public utilities fund. But remember, every year that we do budget, we have increased, it's been a 5% increase to the rates just for catch-up. We have neglected our projects to the point where we're pulling pennies trying to make something work. I truly understand the desire of council to bring this back to the people. I promise you, I get it. But I'm trying to also balance the needs that we have. And again, this is one of many. And again, we're looking at debt, we're looking at our debt ratio, we're looking at the rating agencies as we continue to try to balance where we are every year. I'm just looking for guidance and direction from council if this is the decision of council. But if I need to give more information, fine. But I'm looking at, what we're asking our residents to do is a 5% increase every year on their rates so that we can fund some of these projects. But we were so far behind in maintenance. And we were so far behind in a delay of getting these projects done that rubber has met the road.
So I would consider that, you know, if we as a council and a city decide to use the ARPA funds to fund these infrastructure projects, then that would be considered a direct payment back to our citizens if they didn't have to have a 5% increase if we could use the funds for that. When we, what we learned at the Virginia Municipal League, Vice Mayor Barnes and myself learned during one of our workshop sessions was that the ARPA funds could be used for COVID, health and safety, water sewer projects, and broadband. And this has clearly identified that water sewer services is a one-time shot of money that we could use this for. So if we use the $4.5 million for the seawall and the, let's see, the $4 million for the water tank rehab, then that would be funding that we would not have to go to the bond market for, would not be additional cost. We would not have to increase our citizens' tax by another 5% this year. That would be considered a 5%, I mean, that would be considered direct payments back to the citizens because they wouldn't see any... because they wouldn't see any additional increase in their, in their bills. Is that what we're saying? No, you were saying five?
Only reason I say that.
I mean, it's not a direct payment back, but their taxes wouldn't go up by that amount.
Every year, remember last year while we were in COVID. So it's been written in ordinance that a 5% increase will come every year just because we were so far behind. Now, council has the authority to put a hold on that and say, no, it's not an additional 5% this year, or we're only going to do it for six months of that year, like we did during the pandemic. We put a hold on all increased rates so that our citizens would get some relief from an increase in services rates.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So if we use this funding to fund the project, then we could relieve them by that 5%, which would give them more than some of the direct payment that we're considering because we were saying that they're going to have to fill out an application process. And then you might not meet the criteria for the direct payment. I mean, and that wouldn't be everybody, you know. This would be something that could be benefited by everyone.
Because everyone has to have water.
Everyone has to have water. And then my last question, I guess, the recreation program, the non-current CIP projects, the amounts that are listed there, I guess our council colleagues, my council colleagues came up with these additions.
As a part of.
Madam City Manager.
As a part of the August presentation, we presented the costs for those recreation programs, which also included some school facilities. If you recall, the I.C. Norcom track, the field houses, those projects, we're looking to partner with schools, using school funds for those. The other projects that were discussed was the Charles Pete, building out of the Charles Pete fields. The, I just went blank. You know those. But at any rate, as a part of that discussion, there were also conditions listed for the other recreation facilities as to what would be needed so that we could start to use and program them for our youth, given that we're trying to create more opportunities for youth to have programming. So that was also included in that presentation. And so City Engineer and his staff has developed those costs.
Okay, and they're looking at, I guess, 5.4 million for these recreation programs? I mean, that's what, that's totaling, but we haven't put any ARPA funds into this. So you're saying in order to build this out, we would need to get that money from somewhere else in the ARPA funds that has already been identified?
Right, so what we want to do is for council to kind of give us direction on, if the seawall is off the books, if we are taking seawall off, then we can redirect that 4.5 million to direct payments. We can redirect it to these recreation programs. If you take the water tank rehab for 4 million off, then those dollars can be redirected based on council's determination of where you would like those dollars to land. Again, there are two facilities or as part of the rec centers that we had already allocated the 5.2 million, which you not, you do not see here. But that was in the original four or five presentations that we made. And it's, it's on here. So this was a request during the 101s that we had, that, and during the council meetings, that identified the recreation centers and what that would look like as far as cost.
Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor, and then Vice Mayor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Terry. You know, I keep hearing that our infrastructure is not spending money on the people. Well, the citizens of our city, they're stakeholders in all of our infrastructure. If something happens to a water tower, they're the ones ultimately on foot to bill on it. Just like they're seeing the escalation, had been for some time, on the water bills. And some of that is to help pay for the mandates out at the water treatment center. If I remember correctly, that's where that initially came from. I think that, that total bill, I think it needed $60 million worth of improvements, some of which I think were mandated. But I think we'll remiss if we keep saying, well, we, let's just give somebody money. That's akin to, you know, living in a house where the roof's leaking and the windows are falling apart and taking some money and going to buy lottery tickets. You know, our, the people in our city are the stakeholders. The seawall is not a one-on-one project. That's a culmination of a series of replacing the seawall that was basically crumbling. So I think we would be remiss to not finish that project because once again, that enhances the value of the property that we're trying to market. Also, our citizens use the seawall for recreation, if you may, exercise. So it's not like that's something that we, we don't need. I originally brought up the water towers from aesthetic standpoint, but as a study indicated, there are other problems that we can't see that need to be addressed. And by not doing that, I think we are being remiss. Yeah, we can keep going to the bond market, but I don't think the rating agencies are going to continue to bless that maneuver either. So you know, this money, this ARPA money, where, can be spent on infrastructure. And I say those two things should stay, stay with the program. That's, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yeah, I'm afraid if we don't invest this money into, directly to our citizens, that we won't have any citizens left to enjoy the water, or the direct payments or the seawall. We have a major crime issue in our city and we have a major issue when it comes to our children. And the way that you, you kind of deal with the crime issues, you kind of direct the opportunities and make them more positive instead of negative. And with that being said, we're talking about starting programs for our youth. We're talking about dealing with the crime issues in our city. However, we are sending them to really trash facilities. Our facilities are bad, really bad. And this coming from a parent that takes his child into the facilities, that use the facilities. So I think we will be remiss if we don't invest in our facilities because it's been an issue for years and years. So with that being said, regarding the additional, was it 5.4? It was, I also mentioned the Maplewood Park and the 8th and Jefferson Park. I don't see that detail in this current, this current presentation that we had. And also the upgrades and replacements. I think it was to Jay Poffey had some, was it, new playground, monastery wall repairs. I don't see that detailed in this as well.
Yeah, we haven't been able to cost those out. You just gave those to us, so we're trying to come up with those costs.
Well, I thought, you know, because it was presented, all of this was presented in the August 10th meeting. So yeah, this, all of this, I got this directly off of the August 10th.
My apologies.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, the two basketball courts that you just mentioned are already part of the CDVG program. And they're under design right now currently. They're already funded.
Okay.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Moody, for years, we have neglected our kids, killed all those positive programs that helped folk like myself, like this gentleman survive and make it. And we have a razor-thin recreation department. And I'm kind of confused when my colleagues are not understanding that the seawall will take care of itself in the CIP projects. But we can't police and correct our kids. We have to do things with them and for them and programs and develop them. And for 40 years, we've neglected that. And look at the outcome. Now, everybody up here will cry about, oh, they're killing one another and it's bad, oh, it's not safe. Yet everybody want to skip it when it comes to putting the funds in to help develop these kids. Every family is not middle class. Every family is not wealthy. We have to have these program safety nets to take care of these kids. Now, that project with that seawall needs to remain with the CIP project. We can talk about the water towers because as you said, in 17 and 18 was when you came in with the report. So that we don't know what the damage is now. So we're going to put money in it anyway and we don't know what we're dealing with. Because as y'all said, from day to day to day, you don't know what's going to happen to it. So before we even bring anything about that interior, we would need an inspection. So please, let's do this thing the right way. Let's not just, oh, we got to do this and I'm going to throw this amount of money in it because I know this will take care of it. Let's see what we're dealing with. But let me remind everybody here, the greatest element we have in this city is the human element. Number two, as part of our health and safety, we have to protect our water system. And we know that. But we don't want to just fling money. We want specifics. You did a report in 2017, 2018, that's the mayor said. And out of your own mouth, you said, well, from day to day, it could get worse, it could be 20% more, might be 50% more. So when we need another report on that interior, now the exterior, I'm down because we see that. But let's see what we got on the inside and what, how much time we got and so forth and so forth. But that human element, we, we can't just attack it from the police department. We have to have several phases of attack for it, and one of it is these programs. Now, it might be funny, the mayor might think it's funny, but I'm here to protect these kids and try to get some things to help develop them, try to give relief to our seniors, and that's where I am.
So to that point, Dr. Whitaker, we're in budget sessions and one of the, well, we're about to be in budget sessions. So a thought, because we have the opportunity to look at what we have across the board, one of the things that I would like to maybe suggest is that we look at programming some dollars for the families that we are wanting to address that are in poverty and make that an annual part of our budget so that those dollars would be programmed into social services and that we could identify those families and the needs as we continue to grow. And that way, we could track those families. That would be a part of our normal budget process. And then to be able to address those, and if additional funds are needed, then council has the opportunity to address that there. That's just a consideration.
Before we go there, I know Councilmember Whitaker, you haven't had a chance to speak yet. I just wanted to give you an opportunity, sir, if you wanted to speak. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. I'm still, I still don't have enough information. You've mentioned a couple of times about the credit rating. And so it would be of interest to us to see, because what you're, what you're talking about is are we going to do this on a pay-as-you-go or are we going to go out and get financing? And so I'm interested in seeing if we were to shift these funds over to assist in our citizens, whatever those categories would be, what impact then is that going to have with us going out to the bond market to cover some of these projects that are listed here? And then, and then also, how many of our citizens? Because when you, what you were just talking about then, we still don't have any indication of how many citizens and how much they're being impacted by with direct payments or senior relief. We don't have that information. But you have mentioned a couple of times about the credit rating impact. And I would be interested in seeing if we were to do ABC shifting these funds and go out to the market, what impact would that potentially have on our credit rating? And I think we could make a better decision with that type of data.
Well, one of the things, when we did our last bond sale, there was information supplied from the creditors as to where we were in our standing and what things would impact our credit rating if we move forward by issuing more debt. So what I could actually do is resubmit that information so that could be our starting basis. So you'll pretty much know where you currently stand and what would impact the change of our credit rating if additional debt is acquired.
Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor then. After you, Councilmember Battle, sir.
Ms. Terry, on the direct payments to citizens, who would administer that? Would it be social services?
Correct.
Have, has social services weighed in on what their needs are as far as the ARPA money?
Yes, they have. But we've come back to the table because there is additional information that's requested. So when we looked at the chart during the 101 sessions on what we had allocated, about 1.2 million that would cover, was it 100 or 500 families at $500? And again, that, we provided that during the 101 sessions. But additional questions came about during the council meetings about how many families that would impact and if the state would allow that type of payment to go directly to citizens simply because they met a certain threshold. So the Director of Social Services provided some of that information, but additional questions were asked. And so based on the million, 1.2 million, you had a list of how many families that would cover for how many periods. But the question at hand was, were they going to be able to do a recurring payment or were they going to do a one-time? And then how many families would be impacted by the one-time under a certain category? And how many families would be impacted by another category based on the funding? And so that's what we were trying to capture. In this small window of opportunity, we wanted to focus on these things. But I'll digress and allow City Manager to respond.
And the other thing, getting back to the recreation programs, and to Councilman Battle, kind of, your intro was mentioning my name.
Certainly did, sir.
I've always been a supporter of recreation, long before you even thought about running for council, sir. So my question is, on the things listed here, about six years ago, we, we paid a lot of money for a recreation study. Did we, have we bounced that off the projects on this list?
Madam Manager? And then, yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
To respond to the recreation question, we have looked at the recreation study. We've also looked at the condition of our facilities. The report that we presented in August was based on that information. That's why we had those costs associated. That's what would get those recreation facilities up to a level where we felt would allow us to be able to program more effectively.
Okay, thanks. And 101 here reporting off of recreation. And one on here, reporting off a recreation center, as I recall, that has some structural issues. Does this money take care of those as well? Or what does that consist of? That 1.2 million?
Forgive me, but I haven't looked at the report in quite some time. From the report, it addresses those issues that were in the report that I gave on the tenth, and those were itemized in that. And I apologize, but I can't remember if the structural issues were part of that report.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Moody, let me call your name again.
Mr. Battle, sir? Hold on, let me give you the floor first. Okay, you have the floor, sir.
You gave me the floor, you said after Mr. Moody.
Mr. Battle, sir, I'm giving you the floor, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moody, all my life, I have been involved in recreation. And I didn't sit back and allocate money, which you haven't done a good job of over the years. I was there putting skin in the game, program and organizing, and not asking the city for money, donating my own money. So, you need to stay in your league, sir.
I don't, I don't think, I didn't say...
Mr. Moody, sir? This will be the last rebuttal on this issue, because we're gonna move forward.
Mr. Battle, I didn't insinuate that you weren't involved in recreation. And I'll thank you for not insinuating that I haven't been supportive of recreation during my time on council. I'll leave it at that.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I think it's, from the conversation, it's been a pretty clear direction of where the funds should go. Like I mentioned earlier, there is a very big crime issue in this city. And we all vowed to take care of that problem. We had people who was passionate, saying that, saying this and that. What was that, a couple of meetings ago? Very passionate, how they're not gonna do this, how dare you say I'm not gonna fix the crime problem, whatever. And I think we have an opportunity to do that. And again, some of these things that we're talking about doing as far as infrastructure, I'm afraid that if we don't deal with this issue, if we don't help our children, if we don't give them positive outlets, if we don't give them good facilities, none of us will be able to enjoy it. We have a serious issue in this city, and we really have to tackle them. We really have to make sure that our facilities are appropriate for our children so we can do those programs. We need all the program we can get right now. We need to make sure that we are taking care of those who deal with our children in this city. We have to make sure that everything is in place to deal with the crime issue in this city. And from that VML meeting, these were some of the things that they discussed that we can do with the money. So, you know, I think we would be remiss if we do not go in and go in hard on this issue in our city, because as somebody with teenage children in this city, and somebody who coaches teenage kids in this city, and for somebody who cares about the children in this city, I want them to be alive to sit on this dais one day with us.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager, and then Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
I just wanted to recap the discussion regarding the direct payments. At the last meeting, it was determined that we needed to create criteria to determine how to prioritize the funding, because we initially reported first come, first served. So, we are developing that criteria so that it's not first come, first served. We presented different options for each category. We have confirmed that we can give a one-time payment to those receiving TANF benefits without that impacting their ability to get benefits. We have confirmed that. The other piece of that was the gray area that the state could not report to us regarding whether or not those could be ongoing payments. So, in light of that, we opted not to put our citizens in a position where they could lose benefits, but stick to the one-time payment that we know that we could give. We provided a variety of options for two years, for one year, one time, as well as multiple times. So, we have that list, we have how many families are impacted. For whatever amount, however much we want to allocate to those direct payments, we would have an estimate of how many families are impacted.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what we're looking, I guess, the seawall project and the water tank projects totaling $9.5 million, are those the only two projects that we're looking to extract funding from to fund the recreation programs at 5.4?
Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, those were the only two projects that fell out with opposition when we had the individual meetings with each council member. None of the other projects were identified as a concern. So, those would be, we would be reallocating those funds to the recreation centers and additional direct payments.
Right. And it looks, I mean, with 9.5 million for both of them, we wouldn't even need all of it from, you know, one of them. So, I guess, we as a council would need to determine, you know, which part of the funding we're gonna use for the 5.4 million dollars, and then keep the remaining 4 million for either the water tanks or the seawall replacement, and then use whatever additional million dollars from out of the general fund. I mean, that's the simple math that I have for that. And then, I guess, one other question, I don't know if it's in this forum that we ask the question, but persons who bring in grant funding for the city, are they considered part of the part-time employee base that would be considered for the $750 allocation?
Employees only.
Just only employees.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Also, in all this that's going on, I think health is one of the important things that we need to deal with as well. And with that being said, I would be in favor of some money being allocated towards the Hamptons Roads Community Health Center out, the one that's on, out across the street from Southside. They do some good work. I actually was able to go get my teeth pulled there one day, because I couldn't get a dentist in time, and my tooth was really bad. So, I would like to see some funds there. They do a lot of work in the, in the community, and a lot of our people may need their service and do need their service. So, I would like to see some money allocated towards that.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, and then Councilmember Battle.
This is for the City Manager, I just want to make sure I'm clear. On the recreation, previously, there was 5.2 million, and it has the I.C. Norcom. So, the schools, there's been some discussion that the school system will take these costs on.
Let me explain the 5.2. The 5.2 consists of 4.9 for Charles Peak Little League, and then another 350,000 for the Churchland Little League Lights. That, those two together make up the 5.2.
Say that again?
The 4.9 for Charles Peak Little League, those improvements to that, to those fields at Charles Peak, and then 350,000 for the Churchland Little League Lights.
Okay, now, the 5.2, I'm originally talking about, this was probably the, yeah, this is the October 12 report.
Oh, okay.
And it had 5,235,000, and it has I.C. Norcom, Charles Peak, field houses, lighting.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the 5.2 is just I.C. Norcom field house and the field houses by itself.
So, it has Charles Peak here as well?
Yeah, I think, okay, I understand the confusion now. When we initially listed that, we listed all the projects that we were addressing, whether they were being addressed by school funding or the city's ARPA funding, because we knew that we've had conversations with schools that we were going to include the I.C. Norcom project as well as the three field houses.
Okay.
So, that's why that states all of that under there. But we also had a secondary slide that pointed out that those would be through schools' funding.
Right, so, so the schools will be handling the Norcom, the I.C. Norcom, I think, the lighting and the field house?
The three field houses.
Those issues with the Norcom.
That's what we, that's the plan, is to have the schools' funding address those.
Okay, and so, now, that Charles Peak line item that you said was 4.9?
Yes.
So, where is that here in this updated report?
It's in the, if you look under the categories, it's the recreation programs, facilities, the last line item on the ARPA category.
Okay, so, okay, so that's still at 5.235?
Right, and that's, and yes, that's what we were saying, that all of those additional $5 million of programs is not programmed in yet.
Okay, 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 okay. So, basically, altogether, you're looking at 10 million going into rec?
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
We have public health and public safety, 9 million and some change. Is there any way we can separate that and get what we're gonna give to the public health and what we're gonna give to public safety?
We did in the last presentation. We did that at the last presentation.
And those figures are?
Not off the top of my head, but City Manager will have that for you.
Yes, what makes up the public health and safety is 1.7 for police vehicle replacement, 2 million for fire apparatus, that's their 1 million apiece. Police retention is 1.2 million. Essential personnel is 3.5 million. And then, COVID testing and supplies, that's the function that the city would have to do to ensure everyone is tested, is 600,000. That that makes up the 9.1.
Ma'am, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Based on the schedule for allocating the ARPA funding, I know there's a schedule that the money has to be allocated by, or you have to return, is that, is that correct?
Correct, so...
Well, we're not gonna return any money, I got that, but, but, but... But I wanted to, I wanted to preface this because we have the capital project, which is the seawall repair, which is under our capital improvement program. Can you help us understand if we did not fund that? Do we have the timeframe, first of all, to fund it within the parameters that we need to spend the money? Will we use that money for that project? And if we didn't, if we didn't, if we were unable to meet that, what would that mean, perhaps, in terms of how we could reallocate some funding?
So, the funding, it covers two years, and then you have a time period where you have those dollars encumbered. And then, you have to 2026 to have expended them all, or return those dollars back. So, where we were or where we are with the seawall, if that's specific to your question, there were two phases that we needed to finish. We took one phase off because of the time constraints we have in prevent, or in finalizing that project, because if you all recall, it was like 6.5 million. And we took it down because we knew that that final phase probably would not be complete within this timeframe. So, we reduced that. So, if we do not move forward on funding the seawall, then at that point, we would just have to go after other dollars to finalize and finish, which you have no time constraint on that, because these are dollars allocated through budget process and through funding policies. So, you just got that time period to determine what you want to do if you want to use these ARPA dollars. But again, those dollars have to be obligated and expended by a certain timeframe.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I piggyback on your question?
Absolutely, by all means.
So, when you say obligated, I know, I know you've discussed that before. Once obligated, does that mean that it cannot be re-obligated or transferred?
So, for us, if we could do, say, if you decided that, hey, let's do this 4.5 million dollars. And as we continue to move through the project, we find that we've been able to use 3 million of it. But now that the time has passed, there's a million dollars we won't be able to use to be able to finalize the program. So, at that point, council can determine to reallocate that 1 million dollars to something else, just with the understanding that the city would absorb those additional costs associated with the final phase or whatever phase we were on with the seawall project.
Well, I'm talking about any project. I'm just saying, once, if, in that two-year period, you've obligated the funds to any project, and then you decide that there's another project you want to transfer those funds to, can you do that under the ARPA guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
ARPA just wants to be sure that you stay within compliance to the categories. And it is up to the city to make sure that we spend those dollars within the timeframe.
Well, that's, so if you, you can't shift it outside of the category?
Correct, your budget. Yes.
Yes, you can, or yes?
You can, as long as they're within the categories, if you have a project. So, in other words, so that I'm, make sure I'm clear for your question. If we, if there was a million dollars left from seawall, because we realized, after giving the report every quarter to council where we stand, that we could not finish that, council could come back and say, now, take that other million dollars and direct it to direct payments, direct it to something else within these programs, or we need more dollars for community or homelessness, or let's add another rec ceiling at Cavalier Manor Gym. You could do that.
Okay.
City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, I just wanted to add a little bit more information in that regard. This is a two-year process that we're looking at. We wanted to program these funds because a lot of our, a lot of our programs have a long lead time. And so, we wanted to get started on those. But keep in mind that this does not negate the fact that we will still be continuing to look for additional funds, additional grants that could cover some of these items. And to that extent, then there's always that second year that we can come back and do a recap and figure out how to reallocate those funds that we may have programmed for something that we've been able to be successful in getting additional funds for. So, if that helps.
So, if, if, if we're all in agreement, I think I heard, and I'm just trying to summarize, and I'll certainly depend on my colleagues for helping me be clear, that there was a request to you, ma'am, to bring back information on what the impact to the bond rating or our rating situation would be based on some of these recommendations? Was that a request, sir? So, that's the one request on the table. And so, I think, in the interest of moving things forward, just to make sure that we're making the appropriate decisions based on the needs, to my colleague Dr. Whitaker's point, am I, am I in the right frame of mind saying that that's the first thing we need to do as we move forward?
That's, yeah, that's one of the...
Right. Okay, I just want to kind of clarify the direction we're headed, so we can get to the point where, you know, we can, we can move forward. So, that's one. The second concern, I believe, is, and as I said, this is open for discussion, once we determine what that is, or perhaps tonight, are we prepared to get a consensus on some of the items that we discussed? Wait. I'm just asking the question. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
The second report back item is, need more specificity on how many families, if these funds are transferred, what's the impact on direct payments?
Transfer for the, so, are we looking at the 4.5 million? Are we looking at the 4 million?
You're looking at, if you were to put these projects under bond, so you would let us know the impact. Then, we would also want to know how many families now, individuals, seniors, whatever those categories are, that we're looking to do some direct payment assistance? How many are we impacting? And I think that's important, too, because you're not on a first come, first served. You know, you know how many you're going to be... You know, you know how many you're going to be distributing funds to.
So, those two categories are the, again, the ones that we are concerned.
But that's, I am, I don't know what...
Well, well, I think that's appropriate, and so, before we move forward, as we move forward to ask for our city staff to bring back this information, we need to make sure we have a consensus so that we're clear on what we're asking our staff to do. So, one, are we clear on asking for the report back information on what the impact would be to our bond rating? Please raise your hand.
I think before that as well, Councilman Battle said, even if we do that, we still don't know the actual structural damage when it comes to the water towels and...
And, and that can, that can, that can be, that, sir, that can be another item. I just wanted to deal with that one first, and certainly we can, we can ask for the report back consensus on that. Can you hold that for a minute while I get to the next one?
Well, I think it, it goes simultaneously with this.
No, it's two different, it's two different issues.
It's, it's two different issues.
One is a bond issue, one is the inside maintenance issue.
But even with the bond, that we don't know what the call, the actual cost of it will be.
Fair enough.
Because it's more of an estimate of what we have right now, or just something based off of something that was done years and years ago.
Okay, fair enough. Then can we bring back the report back more specific to what that would be, Mr. Wright? And, and Madam City Manager?
Yes, I will look at the information we have, because based on my understanding, we, we updated that information when we made the presentation in January as a part of the assessment that was done. But we'll look at what information we have and make sure that we bring that back.
Thank you, ma'am. So, that's, that's, that's the two part. The third part, Councilmember Battle, sir?
Yes, I'd like to give you an example first. This weekend, my AC unit wasn't working. I called a person in, he said, "Battle, you need a new unit." I got his second opinion. We put Freon in it, and it's perfect. So, with the water towels, yes, we know we need cosmetic work done, but we need several folk to come in and look at that interior and tell us what needs to be done. Because, see, if we deal with one or two different people, and this is just the temperament of the world in this day and time, people will do anything for money. So, I would encourage you all to not just continuously deal with one person or one business type in doing the repairs for the city, because folk will do anything. Now, it behooves us to get several, several opinions. So, now, let me make it explicitly clear. We know how important that water system is. We see the cosmetic situation, and we want to take care of that. We've already started that. We've talked about, I cried about that even before she got here. But that interior, we need some, some inspections, so we can know exactly what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager?
I, I just want to remind the council of the timeline. Part of what these funds are, are design costs, to be able to do those assessments and get the true cost of what it's going to take to repair them. So, again, we do not have to spend the money if we find that we can get other sources to do this project, we get an actual number, but this money could allow us to do the design at least to know a clearer picture of what we're working with, so that we could put it out and get additional bids on that. So, we're not, we don't have to, it's not an all or nothing. All you're doing is giving staff direction so that we know how to proceed. The infrastructure projects require more time, so we want to make sure that we at least get in the design process and get, get them identified, so that we can get them constructed in the timeline.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
As, as it pertains to those water towels, it, it seemed like this is going to take a longer process, so I honestly don't see how we can even put it in this, in this category, the ARPA funds right now.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Are we clear on the direction that we? Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Are we also looking into, with the utility department, to see can we find some funding as well for this, this water tower, as we're reporting back on that?
So, I, I think that we've previously addressed that, but Madam Manager, would you go ahead?
I just want to make it clear, because the comment was directed to geo bonds. So, yes, we would be looking at the public utilities or revenue bonds at the same time we're looking at the geo bonds.
Gotcha, okay. Are there any other questions that we want to present to Ms. Terry? I think we're clear on what the direction we've given to the manager and city staff. Are there any other questions? Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, sir?
The, the, the direction, I, I think we were clear about that earlier, but I just want to make sure. It was the direction also to include the, what was it, the 4.4 for the rec facilities? 5.4, I'm sorry.
That direction wasn't specifically asked for. We wanted to wait to see what the numbers were, I think, in terms of the financial ratings before we move forward, but I could be wrong. Perhaps someone else would like to chime in on that.
Well, once again, if, if ARPA had not come into the picture, this would have been pursued through bond financing?
You're asking me again?
Right, these, the different rec projects that are, that would have been pursued through bond financing?
Not the parks and rec. We never, that was never a CIP project.
Okay, so that would have been general fund?
Yes.
So, would these be eligible for bond financing? Would the, would the 5.4, would that amount be inclusive in the impact on bond financing?
Anything that we go after bond funding for has an impact.
Right, so you'll include these projects within your impact analysis?
Because I was looking for utility, so...
That's, that's what...
So, that's in addition too, because utility bonds is one thing. We just did funding for the 42 million, which would be additional request for funding for that. So, those are two separate bond requests.
So, then, just so we're all clear, then you will include that information in your report back?
Report back, yes, because that's not an overnight turnaround.
Oh, I understand that, yes, ma'am.
So, that's going to take a little time to get that from our rating agencies.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
So, so we wouldn't need to go to the bond market if we're going to shift the two projects to the ARPA fund?
Correct.
That's, was the question. So, if we don't use, if we don't do the seawall, and if we don't do the water tower, then we can take 9.5 million dollars and shift a portion of that to the recreation projects?
Correct.
Right.
Well, not, not...
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I guess that remains to be seen, because we were saying they may shift to direct payments, but that's going to, I guess that'll be another discussion once we see...
Yes, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
You know, if we're talking about getting figures from the bond rated agency, I think it would be good to hear from them on what we're potentially planning to do and hear from them directly on what that potential impact would be on our bond rating.
So, the information would come directly from them, because they would have to run it through the agencies. They would run a analysis.
But I, I would, I would like to hear from them.
So, we're looking around, because again, they're our agency, but they have other obligations as well. So, a scheduling, so this looks like if you want to push this out until we can hear back physically from our agencies, that may be around December, because it's already October, November. I'm sure they already, I can ask, but I'm trying to get the information from them. So, that will not probably come back until December or January.
Well, at least ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes?
I'm, I'm going to wait to Councilman Battle, because he had his hand up for a while.
Okay, Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Two years ago, I think it was, we approved a $30 million bond for public utilities, correct?
28.9. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So, it's gone.
It's gone.
You know, I'm, I'm concerned, but I'm not saying there's anything nefarious. I said I'm concerned when that money evaporates so quickly. Maybe we need to get a better look and understanding of what we're doing when we approve 28 million dollar bond, and then we come back with such a large number of projects that we're behind in, and that means, what you're telling me in language terms is that there has been an awful lot of neglect for years on that system.
That is exactly what I'm telling you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, I understand the language, but I'm still concerned that, that it's gone so quickly. Maybe we can get a better understanding of the things that we're doing, you know? Rather than a general view, maybe we can start getting an overall view of where the funding is going. And, and, and of course, maybe we need an overall assessments of the problems that we are having with our utilities, and, and a plan of attack to help us catch up from the years of neglect from the colleagues before us who we love so dearly.
So, I'm glad, to your point, to your point, Councilman Battle. Out of the 42 million dollars that we just approved around August, we have already spent and submitted that for about 20, at least 25 million. So, that is just an indication of how far we were behind as of August, because that money is pretty much absorbed. That just goes from years of, if, and if you add COVID in that, and you add increase in prices, and you add delays. So, a lot of the companies were shut down. But we were also, you know, trying to get things done. But again, that comes from years of just, we have old infrastructure, and it's, it's just that time.
Also, I think we need to get a better hold of the contracts that we do with folk, and it seems like they want to complete the city of Portsmouth contracts at the pace they want to. So, are we giving them timelines in the contracts? Are we initiating penalties for delinquency and not meeting the criteria?
Yes, sir, Councilman Battle, to your point. I sat with Public Utilities this morning, operations.
Yes, ma'am.
To go through their operations plan, and they were able to provide me a list of things that have just been neglected. We also went through all of their contracts, the ones that are currently up for bidding. And again, we want to identify some minority businesses in those contracts before we do anything. And what we've come to understand is that services, labor, people are dealing with the same things we deal with. But just so that you know, on large contracts for construction, we have a portion that we hold back until the final punch out, or what I would call punch out for everybody who pretty much understands.
Yes, ma'am.
List is done to determine all funding is relieved. They have phases within the contract that they are required to be complete before we release any dollars. Again, those are some things that we are identifying and reviewing to ensure that Portsmouth is definitely getting what they are requiring the contractors to do in providing the services that Portsmouth needs.
Yes, ma'am. I see we've gotten an awful lot of neglect in the Cavalier Manor field. And, and let me say this, as a, a statement to the citizens of Portsmouth. I hope that we start eliminating, looking over Norfolk or what other people are going through, and just concentrate on what we're going to through, because that shouldn't give it validity for us not to get what we do contractual situations for, what the rest of the world is going through. See, we can't, we have no control over anything but what goes on in Portsmouth. So, whenever a person say, come in and say, "Oh, it's happening like this all over the world", I, 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 that has no reverence with me, because I'm interested in Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes?
The word neglect was used, and I say that we, for years, we have neglected our children. So, I don't see how we can't, we can do, we can't do anything without actually helping our children. I mean, what you give to your youth, it, it, it comes back to you later. We haven't given them nothing, and it's biting us in the ass right now.
And with the link...
With our kids.
Thank you, sir.
I'm still talking.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't cut you off, ma'am.
Sir, thank you, sir.
I did not cut you off.
Sir, you are out of order, and thank you. I have, I, I, sir, you are out of order. Your language is inappropriate, and you are out of order.
I am talking.
Your language is out of appropriate, ma'am. Continue, please. Continue with, continue with your...
I did not finish talking, ma'am.
Continue, please.
Ma'am, I did not finish talking.
Please continue, ma'am.
And I did not interrupt you. I was making a statement, and I didn't say anything derogatory towards anybody or anything. All I am is talking about an issue that we have in our city, and I need to finish what I'm...
Thank you, sir.
So, my, my question for...
Ma'am, I, again, I did not say anything negative towards anybody. I didn't come at anybody in a wrong way or anything. You cut me off because you didn't want to hear my statement.
Thank you, sir.
So, again, I am going to finish my statement.
Thank you, sir.
No, that is not thank you. We, we're not going to be childish and cut people off because you don't want to hear the statement. That's not how it goes.
Ms. Terry, ma'am, you can be seated. We're done with this conversation.
Again, ma'am, that's not how things go. You can't cut people off because you don't like the content of what they're saying. I didn't say anything derogatory to you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
I was in the middle.
Madam City Manager, do you have anything further to discuss in this meeting?
This, this power trip that you on because you can't get your way, or you don't like what people say, that is just crazy with you.
Madam City Manager, do you have anything else to add to the agenda?
You are the mayor of a city that is a council-manager form of government. You're not the, not the leader of the city.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.